We're going to go ahead and get started. The first item on the agenda tonight is a public hearing, a public hearing for amendment to section 405-050, definitions and interpretations. Jack, you want to address that, please?
Sure.
Good evening, Mayor and Board. First item is a proposed amendment to section 405.050, definitions and interpretations. During the approval process for ADM 61 regarding accessory buildings and structures, it was requested by the PMZ Commission at their November 7, 2013 meeting to add a definition for the building area of a structure. And they would like to add the definition to read, "The building area, the total exterior dimension of a building at ground level excluding uncovered improvements of the structure." And I'd also like to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notice, and my PMZ report.
Is there any residents or citizens in the audience that want to comment on the amendments? If so, come forward at this time and we'll hear your remarks. If not, I'm going to close that public hearing. If you have anything else on that one?
Nothing.
I'm going to close that public hearing, open the public hearing on Cadillac Bar &amp; Grill at 108 East Boonslick for a site plan.
On this one here, also, I'd like to ask that part of the public hearing record is the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notices, and my PMZ report. This is a proposed site plan approval for Cadillac Bar &amp; Grill to be located at 108 East Boonslick. For Appendix A, commercial use, retail sales and service, bar tavern nightclub, a conditional use permit is required. This site plan approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with a conditional use permit approval request as required per section 405.340. Previous business located at this location was Mad Dog Sportsman's Bar, which closed September 20, 2012.
Is that all you have in it? You're lumping the conditional use permit and the site plan together?
I was going to do that one next.
Okay, that's fine. Is there anyone that would like to address the site plan for Cadillac Bar &amp; Grill? If so, come forward at this time and we'll hear your remarks. If not, I'm going to close that public hearing and we'll open the third public hearing, which is Cadillac Bar &amp; Grill, 108 East Boonslick for conditional use permit.
First again, I'd like to ask to make part of the public hearing record, the municipal code by reference, the public hearing notices, and my PMZ report. This is a request for a conditional use permit approval for the Cadillac Bar &amp; Grill to be located at 108 East Boonslick. As previously stated, for Appendix A, the conditional use permit approval request has been submitted by the applicant along with the site plan approval request as required by code.
Anyone like to address the conditional use permit for Cadillac Bar &amp; Grill? Not hearing from anyone. I'll close that public hearing. And at this time, I call the Board of Alderman Meeting to order for the City of Warrenton for July 7, 2014.
I wish, how about January?
January, what did I say?
July.
July? I'm right.
July's good.
Correct me. January 7, 2014. At this time, Alderman Clark will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. I guess the first item is draft minutes from the five-year strategic planning from November 26, 2013. Any corrections, additions, or concerns?
Make a motion to approve the draft minutes from the five-year strategic plan from November 26, 2013.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flake, seconded by Alderman Cornell to approve the draft minutes from the five-year strategic plan from November 26, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Dryer's absent, Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Preston Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0 with one absent. Regular board meeting minutes from December 17, 2013.
I make a motion to approve the minutes of December 17 minutes.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Ock to approve the regular board meeting minutes from December 17, 2013. Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alder Preston Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0 with one absent. Item C, work session minutes from December 19, 2013 on the five-year strategic plan.
Make a motion that we accept the minutes from the December 19 meeting on the five-year strategic plan.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kastlerly, seconded by Alderman Clark to approve the work session minutes from December 19, 2013 on the five-year strategic plan. Roll call, please.
Alder Preston Kastlerly?
Yes.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Motion carried, 5-0 with one absent. On our agenda, item four, hearing from the public. At this part of our meeting, we give the public a chance to come forward, address the board, bring anything to their attention that you would like to bring, and we will allow you five minutes for that discussion. So if anybody has anything they want to address the board, please come forward at this time. Come to the podium and give us your name, please.
Hi. I'm Judy Perkins, and my husband is Fred, and we live on North Market Street Extension. So we live on Market Street on the other side of the railroad tracks. And I had spoke to Gary earlier this evening, but I wanted him to know that I wasn't too lazy to show up at the meeting. And we're just, we're having somewhat of a problem. We think we're paying good tax money to get plowed into our house. Since we live on Market Street, which is a really big street, it is a snow route. There's no place for us to go to put a vehicle anywhere that we can get out without a lot of shoveling to get out onto this street. And we just feel like we're getting, I don't know if it's more than anybody else, but it's really getting difficult to get out of our, off of our property. And we did donate the property to the city to go to make the Market Street Extension there, and it's mostly kind of, it's just made a real problem with the snow removal at our, in our property there.
So you think we're plowing, when we plow on Market Street, we're plowing you?
We're getting plowed in. Yeah, we're not getting, we're not getting plowed out.
I went by there this evening, there's, is there two driveways there?
Actually, we have three. We have the garage.
Right.
Then we have a, then we have two entrances onto the property. We own from the railroad track all the way down to the, where the old sewer plant was.
Right.
So, yeah, we were, we were allowed, because there's, that would be quite a few lots there if you divided it up in order for access. And the city did, I think they, they helped us to put more of a driveway in when they, when they did that. And we got a couple of loads of rock there, but they, the, it's just, it's just a big street and it pushes a lot of snow up. We always did do some of our own snow removal down there, but it's just, it's just 10 times worse than when we were on the Oak Street. You know, we were at the bottom of Oak Lawn and, anyway, that's all I.
We'll pass it along to the Public Works Director.
I will.
Have you take a look at it and see if there's some alternative.
I mean, there's a lot of, I drove by there on the way here, I told you I would. You know, there's a lot of blank area along there where a person could just, and it's hard to realize when you're pushing snow, you're momentum, and you're thinking about that, but there are places where you could dump excess snow that wouldn't be blocking driveways, and maybe that could be looked at.
That'd be great, and I just really appreciate it. And I do appreciate the fact that you guys keep those streets clean in town.
Do our best.
We do appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience want to address the board? Not hearing from anyone. I'll extend that same courtesy to the board members. If any board member would like to address the public, we'll extend you the same courtesy. Let's start down with Alderman Flake, if you're in.
I don't have anything at this time.
Okay.
I just want to commend the city staff. I know that they, the road crew, has been working extremely long hours between the snowfall and then the winds that drifted it shut. I got a few concerns or complaints, but when you, when you tell those people to put in perspective that we're just trying to keep the main arteries open, they were at least understanding of that. And I thank for, for what we've experienced, the roads are in pretty good condition.
I agree with you.
It's always interesting that when you sit up here and you're an Alderman in their snow removal. I get a phone call from somebody saying, "The truck hasn't been down our street yet. It's a little storm." And about five minutes afterwards, the truck came down and cleaned their street, and I got a text saying, "You're amazing." So the driver was about, wow, I turned around quickly, right?
Take full credit.
He's right back, I know.
Take full credit, yeah. So I thought was, but still, it's always an issue to the public, we understand that.
And I have to say, you know, commend the crew for doing a great job also, but also, I text Terry Sunday night, what, 11:30, because I had, I was in Dallas, Texas, but somehow or another, the people found out my cell phone number, and they had concerns, and I passed that information on to Terry, who I found out later was probably on vacation too. And she answered me yet that night, so thank you very much. Everything, everything must have been taken care of. I'm sure Guy was already on it, but I just thought I'd pass that information on.
It's always good to get, because I got information from several of you, and it's always good to get that if someone has, just in the event that they have been missed, because it can happen. So at least we can make the crew aware, and if truly they've been missed, they can go back. And if they just haven't gotten there yet, then they will eventually get there. But it's always good to have the information if we get it, so thank you.
I've got a few things I want to mention. Ditto on the street department, not only the Public Works, but the maintenance, grounds of maintenance, and also the police department. These people have worked very hard the last three days. Some of these guys are working 15, 16-hour shifts. The supervisors might even be working longer than that. But we've worked hard at it, and I think overall, for what we were presented, we've done a pretty good job. So I want to thank those people. I think they did a great, great job. We're very proud of them, and if we can figure out a way to make it up to them, we'll buy them lunch or something on these days, so. The other thing I wanted to mention to the board, don't forget, we have the Service Award Program this Saturday night. I hope everybody can come, your biggest spouse or whoever, significant other. I wanted to thank Brandy and Melody and Michelle and Brad for planning and setting up the awards banquet. These things just don't get done by themselves, so thank you for your efforts and work on that. The other thing I wanted to mention and thank, I want to thank Kathy Wineski and Candy Bellman for coming in and manning the phones on Monday when no one else could get in the City Hall. I think we sent Brad out and picked them up, but they were kind enough to come in and spend the day answering the phones, so we had some presence that we were open, even though a lot of our staff couldn't get in. So I do appreciate that. The other thing I wanted to mention to the board, that there's a meeting tomorrow with the Greater Warren County Economic Development and the Montgomery County Economic Development, a joint meeting at Jonesburg at 12 o'clock at Frumpy Joe's. It's a luncheon meeting, and the topic of discussion is the I-70 corridor with the future holes and what may be done with that. So if anybody's available, please feel, feel free to come on. Alderman Dryer's not going to be here for the rest of January, so if we have someone else that might miss, I'd kind of like to know about it in advance, so we make sure, at least we have a quorum if we have our second meeting there. The election sign-ups end January 1, so if anybody from the public is interested in filing for the mayor's position or an Alderman position, that's the last day of.
What date?
January 21st.
Pardon me?
January 21st.
What did I say?
January 1st.
Oh, January 21st. I thought I said that. I got 21st written down. And what else do I have? Lieutenant Ellers filling in for Chief Otis Shaw tonight. Chief's under the weather. Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you being here. And the only other thing I have, I have, let me double check my notes. I have a letter here from the Attorney General's office. City of Warrenton had a complaint from one of our residents about a sunshine violation, and it was complaint, or the complaint was handed over to the Attorney General's office. I'll read the gist of the letter. Chris Coster is the Attorney General for the State of Missouri. He says, "Our office received your letter dated November 27, 2013, along with the supporting document, documentation you replied," or supplied, "and this was a reply to a request from the Attorney General. After reviewing the packet of information and discussing this issue with you, our office is satisfied that the City of Warrenton is aware of its record retention requirements. We encourage you to continue to ensure that public records are available for review under the Missouri sunshine law. Our office considers this complaint closed. If you have any questions, feel free to contact us. Sincerely, Chris Coster, Attorney General." And with that being said, that's all I have. So we're going to move on down the agenda. Next item on the agenda is the introduction of Ryan Chatick, meter reader, with a start date January 6, 2014, $12 an hour. Melody, you want to introduce?
Well, actually, I don't see Ryan. I don't know with him being his first day, if he got his wires crossed and thinks he's coming to the second meeting or not, but.
Not, not a problem. Tell him if you see him tomorrow, tell him we missed him.
No, I'm sure.
Anyway, tell him welcome aboard. We're glad to have him. Tourism recommendation on fireworks display. Mr. Shaw, you want to address that from the tourism board?
Yes, thank you. As you know, we've, in the past, we had co-opt fireworks display with the fair board during the fair season, and over the past couple of years, you know, there's been some different problems going on, both with the, with the fair and with the city, as to it no longer being a 50/50 thing. In order to alleviate, I guess, the situation, this past summer, we didn't have a fireworks display. And I know the, the fair board caught flak for it because they didn't do it. The city caught flak for it because, well, why didn't the city pick it up and everything? Well, rather than, you know, point the blame or play the blame game, we began looking at trying to find a solution to it. And one of the solutions was, you know, okay, the city take over the fireworks display. And we looked at possibly if the city did it, moving it out to the athletic complex. There were different, several other options and everything like that. I've kind of, at the last tourism meeting, I told them, I said, "I'm doing a total 180 on this." And I, and the Tourism Commission, in their wisdom, agreed with it, I think. But what we would like to present to the board to consider, and we have it, it's budgeted and everything, is the city would go ahead and pay for the fireworks display. We've budgeted $10,000 for it. We started doing that, I think, what, two years ago?
It's been two or three years.
Two years ago. Just in case, to go back real quick, what we used to do was we would pay $5,000, and the fair would pay $5,000. It was, like I say, a co-op thing. They've gotten finance, they've gotten into some financial straits, so we decided, hey, let's budget this much in case, you know, if we want to take it over. So the money is there. We got, and after looking at it, I thought, you know, if we go to the athletic complex, you're kind of reinventing the wheel. You're going to move it to a different, different locale. You're going to have maybe similar problems, you know, that you're going to have to have somebody set it up and do all the reengineering of it and everything like that. You've still got the problem with, with traffic flow and everything like that. Bottom line is, I said, let's have the Tourism Commission, along with the city, pay for the fireworks display, continue to do it with the fair, at the fairgrounds. And we've, I've talked to the fair board, I had a meeting with them. We tried to anticipate some different things, problems that might be liabilities. It looks like their liability insurance for the fair and everything would cover it, even if the city paid for the fireworks display. It would be the same company that we've dealt with doing it, it'd be the same people shooting off the fireworks and everything like that. So that's going to be our recommendation with this. Like I said, we've got the money budgeted, and we think it would be, it's time to maybe kind of give a helping hand. The fair is in financial straits, and I think it's something, it's a, it's a way we can reach out. The fireworks display brings in people from other areas, and I think it's a way we can reach out to a business that, you know, hey, we want to see you continue to be viable, and we want to continue to have a fair. And if this helps, you know, helps them out, I think it's something that, I know we've had some problems with the fair in the past, but I think we've got a, they've got, they've got a good young group now, willing to reach out and maybe go, not be so set in their ways and everything, and I'm hoping, you know, maybe the city, we can go meet them 50/50 on this and, and go along with it. So that's, that's our recommendation, is that we go ahead and.
Let me see if I'm following you. You might, you might have lost me a little bit. You've got $10,000 project here on the fireworks, and you're wanting to use $10,000 of tourism money, or are you wanting $5,000 tourism money and the city to kick in another five? Where are you going on?
Well, it's basically, it's all, it's the city's money, but it comes out of the tourism, out of the tax, the tax money that the tourism takes in. Yeah, no, it's, it's.
I got you. I thought, I thought you were, when you were talking about going 50/50 on there, I thought maybe you, maybe y'all didn't want to use all tourism dollars, you wanted to use some of the general fund or something.
No, no. Going back to the 50, I'm, maybe, yeah, where you got confused or where I wasn't very clear was, we used to do 50/50 from, at the fair, and $5,000 from the Tourism Commission and $5,000 from the fair. And one of the fair, we do have one of the fair representatives, David Micas, is here with us tonight. If you, you know, I think he, he was at the meeting that I met with him, and if he's got anything to add, or if you've got any questions for, for David, you know, as far as from the fair board, or where, you know, their position on it.
Tourism board voted on it?
Yes. It was unanimous that we, we go this route.
I think from, you know, talking about the liability standpoint, just the techno, technical piece of this, I think it's a matter where we give the money to the fair board and the fair board contracts with the firework and pay for it, no?
No.
No, we don't extend funds directly to any of those entities. We stop that.
Well, my only reason for questioning that, then, is if we pay for fireworks ourselves, we have the contract with the fireworks company, or we posit that the liability won't come back on to us?
I don't think so. That's something we talked about that maybe Chris might have to look into a little more too, but in talking, talking to Paul Owenby on it, what, as far as he had looked into their insurance policy, the insurance policy covers, the fireworks display is on the fairgrounds, and that's, and that's basically.
And I agree with you there. I just think we need to look into it to make sure that we're not brought back into it because of paying for it directly.
What I think we did, and correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, is I think we, in the past, had checked, and we talked about, or maybe you guys talked about this this time, was being named as an additional insured on their policy.
Yeah.
And then also checking with our own policy to see if we were covered, and I think we were covered under our general liability as well. But I, I think that's something we could, I mean, that would be fairly easy, I think, kind of, not liability-wise, to the extent of our limits.
Yeah. I think we need to, though. I mean, I don't like the idea of just saying, because the fair board has coverage, we're covered. I, that doesn't settle the legal situation.
And it all, and again, it gets back to, you know, we're trying, we want to try and provide a fireworks display for the public, and be it, you know, we see the cities around us, Wright City, Jonesburg, Wentzville, they all have fireworks displays and everything. So we would like to, you know, we want to see it continue for the city or for the residents of the city. And again, like I say, the fair brings in people from out of the county, so it fits our parameters for doing, doing that kind of, spending that kind of money through the Tourism Commission, so.
What kind of fireworks program can you get for $10,000?
Well, it's what we've had, what they've had in the past. And, you know, it'd be something that, you know, we need to probably look, as, as everything else gets more expensive, if we want to do a bigger one down the road, we may want to increase that. And maybe the fair board, maybe the fair association becomes more fiscally viable that they can, they can get back in the game, put some money back into it. You know, years ago, it was not, it was not the city, it was not the fair board that did the fireworks display. It was a, a group of, I think it was Lions Club and city businesses, and they did it. And they would, they would just through donations, have as much as a $15,000 fireworks display that they, that they built up for, just through donations and everything. Unfortunately, those days are gone. I would like to see them come back, where we would have the different organizations and the, and the city and the fair board and everybody working together to, you know, put on a bigger, bigger show. But, you know, we're, we're trying to walk again before we run, so.
So what do we do?
Like I say, if you have any questions.
As, I talked to Mike about this the other night. My only concern, I guess I have, is at some point, I'd like to see the fair board not charged to get in, so our residents can get in and watch the fireworks without having to pay to go onto the fairgrounds and stuff.
And I remember talking to you about that, and since then, we, I've hashed that over, and I've talked to one of the other fair board members. We talked about it. It's, it's not really practical to try to do that, because you've got, first off, you've got season ticket holders that come in out there. So where do you draw the line? And then if you do let them in free, and then possibly right now, they're looking at this being a Friday night deal, and there's going to be a demo derby going on and everything like that. So if you let them come in free for the fireworks display, do you make, how do you, do you make them leave? Do you make them leave after the fireworks display? The other thing, you know, is that they look at, historically, what's happened is, you know, the, the parking area fills up with people to watch the fireworks display anyway. A lot of them don't go into the fair, they see the fireworks for free. I've, you know, I've seen people out at the. You know, I've seen people out at the little strip center there where the podiatrist office is, they watch it from there, they watch it, you know, from different areas. So, it'd be nice to be able to do that, John, but it's probably not practical to do that.
People can see it.
And I don't think you're talking about that much of a...
We'll never get the fair board financially up and running if we get our thing free on Friday.
Well, that's true. And I don't know, David, you had to...
May I can answer a couple of our questions?
If you, if you would interject something on that.
I'm Dave Micas, I'm secretary for the fair board. A couple of questions as far as letting them in free. There would be a couple of other options if you decided not to do them on the Fourth of July. If we moved to, say, Tuesday evening, we could do them then and possibly have a free gate that night. I mean, Friday night, just the way the fourth falls this year, being on Friday, probably isn't gonna be viable for the fair to do. But if we did, look at, moving them sooner in the week would be an option, you know, we could have a free gate.
To me, if you're gonna have fireworks on the Fourth of July, it's gotta be the Fourth.
Yes, I mean, if you're gonna have them on the Fourth. But I mean, they could be shot, say, on the second, or first, or second.
I don't see the celebration on the second.
Possibly, but I mean, that is, that is an option. So, I mean, we could look at possibly doing it, you know, another night if that would interest the board, but Friday night, probably a free gate.
I was thinking something like a free, make it free after nine o'clock, you know, like, just a few minutes before the, before the show starts.
Yeah, I just don't know how that would be really viable.
The most people are already gonna be, the vast majority of people who are gonna see the other stuff or be at the fair are already gonna be there.
Yeah. The only thing would be, people, if people found out, they might all wait till nine o'clock, you know, to come in the gates at that time. Also, a couple of other concerns, I'm sure the fair board wouldn't have a problem as adding the city on rider, you know, additional insured on the policy. And you were talking about the $10,000. We've been shooting $10,000 with the fireworks for a long time at the fair, that's just kind of been the number. And three, three or four years ago, we had reduced the size of the shell. I'm not a fireworks person, but I think they used to shoot four and five inch shells, which means a bigger, better display when that one goes boom. That $10,000 is kind of, we haven't increased it at all, so we have actually gone down in the size of the shell. I think we shoot mainly three inch shells now. From what I can understand about the fireworks is they just don't go quite as high, so you have to be closer to see them. You still get a pretty good show, but you can't see them from 10 miles down the road. You have to be more in the vicinity of the fireworks.
Any idea how much one of those costs?
I have no idea, to be honest with you.
I was just thinking, if somebody wanted, you know, from a business standpoint, if a business in town wanted to underwrite it, you know, so, just, anyway.
Yeah. But that's, that's how, that's what the fair has done, they've decreased the size of the shell, and to get, I think you shoot for the time length is what they're shooting for, 20 minute show or 15 minute show, something like that.
Any other questions for Dave?
I was at the tourism meeting, and Mr. Shel Harvey made a very good and impassioned presentation to try and enhance the partnership between the city and the fair board, and I hope that that, that will foster and continue, and I know most of the people, well, I've known most of the people that have been involved on the fair board for years, and there's absolutely no reason why this can't be a more functioning relationship between the city and the fair board. I would make a motion to approve the tourism recommendation of $10,000 for the fireworks.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Cornell, seconded by Alderman Kestrel, to approve the tourism's recommendations on the fireworks display in amount of $10,000. Any further discussion?
Yeah, as I understand it, Mike, the tourism money isn't, comes through the hotel tax, right? And that's the only source?
Hotel...
Bed and breakfast?
Yeah, I think there's some other, there's a few other odds and ends that it comes through.
But it's really not general revenue money raised through, I think taxpayers will listen to the discussion, you don't, you know, this isn't general money raised through water and sewer bills, through property taxes. It's really taxes paid specifically by individuals who come into the community and are staying at bed and breakfast hotels for the most part. And it looks like the budget is around $170,000 a year?
It's about $100,000 a year.
Thank you, because I was looking at the average receipts per month, but that might be...
It's higher in the...
Okay, okay, so $100,000. So, could you just give the public some kind of feel for how that kind of breaks out? There's so much to the fair board, so much to, I know I'm catching a little off guard, but I think people just need to have a little education on this.
Okay, well, what, I guess what we try to do, the whole thing with tourism money is, we're trying to have events, and help with events, that bring people from, from not just Warren County, but from Lincoln County, St. Charles County, Franklin County, Montgomery County, wherever we can. So, we, we try to do, contribute to where we can with, for instance, the concerts in the park. I take that back, that's not, that's through the park board, isn't it? But what we're looking at down the road is to enhance programs like, right now, we do concerts in the park, we do three of them in the summer, June, July, and August, and in conjunction with the Warren County Fine Arts Council. What the tourism council is looking at doing, okay, let's expand that, let's do, let's have our own, do an, you know, do an additional one in May, maybe one in September, or do an additional one in June, July, and August, through the tourism council. Again, to have events to bring people from out of the area. We're also, this year, we budgeted, I think, $35,000 or $40,000 for, to do some enhanced music programs. We've got, like I said, we've talked to the fair board, the, they've got a nice stage area out there like that. What we're looking at possibly is finding one of these acts coming through, one of these music guys coming through, catching them on Interstate, or they're coming down Interstate 70, and maybe putting them, getting them booked here to do, and it would be like maybe a free concert, or charge a minimal amount, instead of charging, like Verizon, $50 for a ticket, you know, charge $10 for the public to get in and see. So, these are things we're trying to work toward, and we're also trying to work toward bringing, you know, enhancing programs that bring people in to, to see the Schollinger House. You know, one of the things that came up was, when we bought the property next to the post office, you know, they were talking about possibly a tourism center there or something. Well, I think before we get a tourism center there, we need to have...
Tourism activity?
Yeah, something to come, you know, to attract people. So, that's, that's what we're trying to do. We, you know, we, we're trying to help out too with the, with the athletic complex, trying to bring more tournaments, be it softball tournaments, baseball tournaments, be it American Legion ball, be it USSA softball, we've got, so we've got the money there, you know, and we try to earmark it for programs, but right now, nothing's etched in stone. But yes, it is not money that is, it's not money taken from, that would normally be used for sewer and water improvement, it's money, and hopefully, you know, what we try to use, and we get it from the hotels, and that, what we try to do is, is bring stuff into town, bring attractions into town, that they will book, they'll get, you know, the fair gets, brings people into town, that people use the hotel rooms.
Yeah, well, I don't know if we passed this, I don't know if you were on the board, and there was a lot of discussion about if you put a tax on the hotels, the people would stop coming, but you know, you go to any community where you stay in a hotel, you're paying the local tax, and that's really what this is for staying here. So, it looks like here, it looks like, on my notes, it's raised over a million dollars for projects to promote tourism since we started.
Well, and, you know, and I think, I think, maybe I was on there when we did, I was mid-'90s or something.
Yeah, I think you and I were...
It was, it was a very...
Somewhat controversial.
Controversial point, but back then, I traveled a lot with the company I worked for, no, not a lot, but I traveled, and it was the same way. Everywhere you went, you paid, you could go in your room and look at the hotel tax, what it cost you for, so...
Any other questions for Mike? Have we not, I have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Roll call, please. Let me read the motion back here. The motion was that we approve the tourism recommendation on fireworks display in the amount of $10,000. I have a roll call vote.
Alderman Ock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Person Castleton?
Yes.
Motion carried 5-0 with one absent.
Fred, you can see him from your house.
Thank you very much.
You're too thrilled.
You probably heard too many of those probably.
One day, Fred.
Item number nine, zoning officer, building commissioner, Jack Hamp. What do you got for us, Jack?
The proposed amendment to section 405.050, definitions and interpretation. Previously discussed, it was a request by P&amp;Z Commission to add the building area definition to read the total exterior dimension of the building at ground level, excluding uncovered improvements to the structure. This motion for approval passed eight to zero with two absent at the January 2nd, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
Was there something that triggered this specifically?
When it was going through, when ADM 61 regarding accessory buildings and structures, there was discussion about building areas, so they just asked to have that included in the code, because there was nothing in the code defining a building area.
Do you, when you have your home assessed by the assessor's office, there's always a square footage on it, is that interior or square footage they use, or is it exterior? I'm just curious, do you know?
I don't know what the assessor office uses, but...
No idea, okay.
Any other questions or concerns? And that's coming up with our ordinance change in the playground?
Yes.
Right, okay. About item 9B?
Proposed site plan approval for Cadillac Bar and Grill to be located at 108 East Boonsley. On December 6th, 2013, a request was filed for a site plan approval for Cadillac Bar and Grill. Property is zone C2 general commercial. This would require, this location would require a conditional use permit. The applicant has applied for a conditional use permit along with the site plan request.
Is this significant changes to the interior of the building?
There was no changes shown interior or exterior on the building and the information that was submitted with the application.
Every time a new owner has it, do we have, they have to go through this?
No, sir.
Okay, because it's been, it's been this type of operation since I was a little boy, so I was wondering.
The bar closed, the previous business located there was Mad Dog Sportsman's Bar and Grill, which closed September 20th, 2012. Since it was closed more than six months, that makes it eligible for a conditional use permit.
Why do we have that in ordinance, counselor? I'm just, I hate this, public asked me their question.
You always have an issue with a grandfather, or the proper term is a legal nonconforming use, and you pick, the ordinances kind of pick an arbitrary, arbitrary timeframe, like city of Columbia is 90 days. If you go 90 days without a use, or it used to be, who knows what it is now, but you arbitrarily pick a period of time because you adopt a new zoning district or is zoning, and you don't want to allow that, or you want to make it a conditional, and at some point, you know, you gotta have like, the old use kind of assimilate with the new use or the new property that's there. And, you know, on this particular one, we discussed it with Mr. Gibson, and Mr. Gibson, he was out here meeting, which you have to explain why you had to get the conditional use, because it had gone six months. Our code says if you go six months, your legal nonconforming expires, and you gotta bring it up to the new code, which downtown has, it is a conditional use permit for a bar. That thing that was planned out is just kind of the way everything came together on it.
Which automatically triggers in the site plan.
Which automatically triggers conditional use in the site plan, which, you know, like, you know, it was Bray's, then Sportsman's, and Mad Dogs, and who knows what it was before, that's just my time in Warren County.
I do have a question or a concern, I don't know if this is the proper time to bring it up. When we talk about coming into compliance and codes, the fact that this does not require a conditional use as long as it is in continual operation, so that's been 40 years, 50 years, is this a time to address the non-compliant codes of this, such as ADA compliant bathrooms? ADA compliant structure? And the reason I bring that up, I know that Holly's Cafe went through the same type of thing, and they were required to, we required them to bring their bathrooms and part of their structure up to ADA requirements.
And that may be because Holly's did some construction, is it...
They had a building permit drawn, they remodeled their kitchen.
And Alderman Cornell, yes, can you address code type issues in a conditional use permit or a site plan? Yes, both of them allow you to add conditions, and those conditions can be to, with regards to structure of the premises, you know, issues of the premises, because it is one of the things you can look at in a conditional use or a site plan, and both of those allow those types of conditions to be added. Have you guys traditionally done that? No, you haven't, but do you guys have the ability? Absolutely, that's one of the issues you can do to bring some structures or some things up into compliance. They're not making any modifications to building, the distinction with Holly's was Holly's building permit to modify that's then triggered that automatic requirement to update to these certain code, code issues or certain things. This is different because it's not automatic. Can you make it a prerequisite to approve it? Yeah, you can.
Thank you.
Does this structure significantly have huge ADA issues? It's been years since I've been in, just curious.
I, my guess would be that the, at least the bathrooms are not ADA compliant. I don't know what they've been like over the last, I haven't been in there since it changed to, to Mad Dogs, but may or may not have frequented it on a regular basis before that.
Yeah, may or may not. Okay.
Any other questions or concerns? You want to address the conditional use?
I'd just like to add to the site plan part, that this motion for approval passed seven to zero with two absent and one abstention at the January 2nd, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
The site plan did, right?
The site plan did, yes.
The site plan, okay.
Next is the proposed conditional use permit approval for Cadillac Bar and Grill, relocated at 108 East Boonsley. Just continuing the same topic for discussion. And this motion for approval passed four to three with two absent and one abstention at the January 2nd, 2014 Planning and Zoning Commission meeting.
What was the abstention about?
One of the commissioners had a work relationship.
Okay.
Commissioner Costo called me before the meeting and inquired whether he had a conflict, and I advised him it would be best, because he did direct business with...
Well, I see he abstained, but then there's two other people...
Two were absent.
Absent, okay, I see, okay.
Normally, we see those unanimous decisions, this was four to three.
That's, that's why I included the planning and zoning commission's draft minutes for your records, too.
I took the time to go back and watch the, I couldn't attend the meeting that night, I have watched the video of the meeting, and there was a little bit of discussion and concerns raised by a few members, and the vote would reflect that regarding conditions. There seemed to also be a question about whether or not conditions could be placed on this business if they did not, could they place a condition on Cadillac Bar and Grill... on this business if they did not, could they place a condition on Cadillac Bar and Grill if they didn't place that on pre, on other businesses of the same type? That seemed to, to be a point of contention, and there wasn't legal representation to, to draw that line. Could you clarify that?
Well, the way I took in the meeting, after the meeting, which obviously was not anticipated that these issues would come up, was the first issue was the nature and character of Mr. Gibson's first business and the issues with that business. Now, that is a very slippery slope. This is not opened under the same name, so there's very limited ability to review the type of business or some of the issues or complaints that were made and add a condition because you really have to put the condition on the property and not on the business. You really have to address the, because that may be another aspect of government that should or should not be involved in that. The, every pe, the way zoning operates, the general rule is every piece of property is unique. So you have to look at each property and the applied for business to a certain extent, but not work specific to the person opening the business.
Correct.
You have to look at the applied for business, and you can add conditions that may be different than a particular business had down the street, or may be conditioned somewhere. You can even make conditions that expire after a year or whatnot, you know, related to a particular business or particular piece of property. It is a conditional use. They do have a vested right to use the property most of the time. It's just what conditions are reasonably related to the property.
Planning and zoning putting conditions on?
They did not recommend any conditions.
They did not recommend any conditions. Any other questions or concerns on the conditional use permit? Mr. Gibson, did you want to address any of these issues, or do you want to say anything to the board?
No, sir, I don't have a sense.
Okay, that's fine. And that's going to be later on in our ordinance also. You have something else you want to add?
I do, I guess my question for Mr. Gibson is, I believe it's, your application for liquor license is on at our next meeting. Is that correct?
I thought it was in this meeting, I thought it was certain.
No, the liquor license application is on the next meeting.
The liquor license application can't be processed until we have an approved use of the location. So it couldn't be on this meeting because we don't have an approved use for the location. So it has to be on next meeting.
If we, and here's where, where I'm going with this. I do have, after, after viewing that meeting, I do have a few concerns, not necessarily towards the character of the business, but towards the business and the location. I would like to bring that up at the next meeting. Is it possible to put both of them on at the same meeting, next meeting, to pass the conditional use to that?
I think you just said you couldn't.
I'm not sure what one has to do with the other. We have to do step A before you can go to step B. This is step A. If, if you want to attack the liquor license.
I'm not, I'm not thinking of attacking anything. I, I do believe that there are some, and I can bring some of them up now if we want to have the discussion about some, again, bringing the bathrooms up to ADA compliance. I believe that it would be appropriate to look at the lighting plan, and I believe that there are illumination plans and codes to make sure that this bar has proper illumination throughout the building. Some emergency lighting and, and emergency egress doors, which I believe are currently there, but to address how the doors, whether they're locked, uninhibited, and.
With the fire department, do, have you got it inspected by the fire department?
Yes, sir. Kevin Reed, sir. I've been associated with Mr. Gibson for the past 11 years.
Give me your name again.
Kevin Reed, R E I D. I'm the one who did the site plan and made everything up. The doors are 36 inches wide open and getting across, which is adequate for if you want to put a, run in the wheelchair. The bathrooms, however they are with the way they were with Mad Dog, men's bathroom was a very large sized bathroom, five by seven. The women's is a little smaller. The ADA question that you would ask is that you have to totally modify that whole situation and then flock with Mr. Change the interior structure because I am a contractor with no ranking, and the way I'm doing it. So those issues were addressed, and as I put the plan together, the site plan together, and drew the design up, I drew it up according to what the board existed before, previously, in the last five, six, seven years. So those issues about the ADA are things that you can address if you choose to, and it's not an issue, that's something that can be done, you know, once you get yourself open, you get yourself running, if you decide to, and say, I need to modify the bathrooms, and you've got clientele of customers when you see coming through the door that are disabled, then those are appropriate changes will be done to satisfy the consumer. That is what you do. Now, as far as the lighting is concerned in there, we have adequate lighting that at the end of the night, lights come up bright. In meat tab, you have a bar type setting of lights that will, that lights up everything. Included around the walls are all the bar lights. When you light up all those bar lights around there, inside interior, along with the lights that we have, you have a very luminous, you can see the interior of the, of the building pretty well. Outside, we haven't changed any of the structures outside or any of the lights. If required to, you can put lights upon that are on it. Those things are minor details that we can adjust to make it more accessible. We didn't get into changing all of that because we wanted to keep the same former, you know, design look into the building that existed. So the parking and everything else is the same thing, nothing was changed. The doors of egress, all are clearly marked with exit signs. Make sure of that. Got the law by law. One here, one here, one here. Nothing blocks the pathway to no door. You have easy in and easy out.
Both doors on Main Street?
Both doors got.
Undestructive and unlocked?
Unlocked. Because that is the law, and you have to have an egress, period. Anything should happen, you've got to be able to get in and out.
They do have a bar over that one door, but the fire department told me that during business hours, to make sure that was.
Make sure it's unlocked, but the signs have to be, I mean, I'm very aware that you must have signs to indicate where you can go in and out of there. You must have an exit plan for no matter what you do, in and out of the structure. So those are things that I took into consideration when I drew the plans up, because I did it myself, so I knew, I checked everything. This got to be done, this got to be done, this got to be done, this got to be done. These are things that make a successful business. And on the same token, you must take into consideration, this business has been existing downtown quite a while. It's something to add beauty and culture to your community. Those are the things that I look at. Towards the past, I've been with him a long time. We worked six o'clock in the morning, three o'clock in the morning, minutes man together. So I'm there with him. So in, in any event, if anything goes wrong or anything needs to be changed, I'm the guy that's going to change it. Do the, do the, do the, bring the plans up, submit for permits, do what we got to do to make it a better business. And so I made sure of that. But I want to make sure that we've got proper aisle space between tables, proper open space all the way around, proper egress in and out of the building at all given times. Thank you, sir.
Jack, do you have any issues with the building itself?
I, we don't have any detailed plans because what they submitted, they were not proposing to make any changes.
Yeah, so in the past, you never had any issues, necessarily. The fire department doesn't have any issues with the building?
Not that I'm aware of.
Any other questions for Jack? Okay, thank you, Jack.
You're welcome.
So we're going to move on. Director of Operations, Terry Thorne.
My first item for you this evening is to confirm the date for the goal review for the strategic planning draft. Originally, we had talked about February 20th at 5:00 PM, and said that we would firm that date up this evening. So I hope that you all checked your schedules, and would like to confirm that date for the plan, February 20th.
Anyone have any issues with that date?
I'm still fine.
You're good.
And that is the week of the regular scheduled meeting, right?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm still good on that date.
We good on this end?
Yeah.
What's the date?
February 20th.
What was the date, Terry?
February 20th at 5:00 PM.
5:00 PM.
Was that February, February dairy?
That'd be February dairy. 5:00 PM, we're on, Terry. All righty.
Nobody seems to have an issue with it.
I'm a, I'm a definite maybe.
A maybe?
Yes.
What's a definite maybe?
It, it's definitely a maybe. I've got some prior commitments. I don't know if they will come to fruition or not.
What was the other date?
You all did not choose a secondary.
I think we picked that date because we knew Karen was traveling.
Yes, that's probably why.
That works best for, for schedule.
I think we'll go with that date. As we get closer to it, if there's a major issue, we'll look at it again.
Okay. My next item for you this evening is the recommendations from the Tourism Commission meeting on December 19. In addition to discussing fireworks, they also approved several budgeted items requested by the City of Warrenton. There was a request for reimbursement for the advertising of the farmer's market in this previous season. Also, the marketing brochures for the athletic complex, which was budgeted at $1,000. Reimbursement for Hometown Christmas budget was $2,000, which will actually come in probably somewhere around $1,500. And then four tournaments at the athletic complex to be hosted by the Recreation Department. Told for those four tournaments, $11,500. So the total of the four recommendation, four recommended approvals is $15,626.50 to the City of Warrenton.
Why are the tournaments so high? I'm just curious.
These are four tournaments that our athletic depart, that our recreation staff are going to do, and it includes everything from the cost of officials to advertising balls, whatever else Dottie would be.
Supervisors, awards, pretty much any expense that, that goes with the tournaments that is in, in that budget.
It's a lot of money, Mike.
I think one of the big expenses is like umpires. I think they're what, like $15 a man a game or something like that?
Actually, for tournaments, they're closer to 35 or 40.
Okay.
Umpires and umpires.
Now, okay, what, I think what's in that, too, Gary, is like the balls for these tournaments, they'll buy them all at one time, and they may not, you know, there may be some left over after all the tournaments. So it's, those are the kind of things that.
And that's the expense of putting it on. You still get income back in, so.
That's correct.
Teams pay to get, to get in there. And it'll vary on the, some of the softball tournaments, you can charge, what'd you say, like $200 a team for them, and some of them you charge $100.
How many teams use your tournament?
What's that?
How many teams are usually in a tournament?
We've set the minimum for each of these tournaments at eight, but we could expect for the youth tournaments, a word of 20.
I mean, it's not a lot individually, but we look at four together, $1,500.
It's, you know, for, I think it's for, you know, the season, and hopefully there'll be some more. Once you start these and get a name out there, and they see the athletic complex, again, the idea is then, you know, bring in more people. If other teams see it, you know, word gets out and.
You need to advertise these from like Arkansas and Tennessee, so they have to spend the money.
The, the restaurants, the restaurants love our softball tournaments.
What's that, Doug?
The restaurants love when we have our softball tournaments. I believe Appleby's and one other told me that they, they doubled their staff on those days to handle the, the visitors.
And Rodney said, you know, they think they'll get, if it's a weekend tournament, they get, you know, they fill.
Fill up.
Sure. They'll fill much out.
Okay, so do you want a motion that simply says approval of the expenditures as requested?
That would be perfect.
Since there's numerous, numerous expenditures?
That would be perfect.
As listed.
As listed, I make that motion?
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Hock, seconded by Alderman Kestrel, to approve the tourism recommendation in the amount of $15,625.50. Roll call, please.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kestrel?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Kestrel?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent.
Gary, we still got a lot of money we can spare, too.
Did you get that, Chris?
Yeah, Chris says tourism board is extra fun. It'll be the paper headline. Tourism board has excess funds sitting on.
Operational update.
I do have an update for you from last meeting in regard to the question about the county being willing to turn Moccasin Drive over to the city. I spoke with Barb Daly this morning. She had taken that question to the commissioners. She also indicated that she had done the research to try to find records indicating what had happened previously with Moccasin, and she also found no records where anything had been turned over to the city. The commissioners indicated that they would certainly be willing to turn that over to the city. We can have a quick claim deed drawn up. There would be a $180 cost for Lewis and Beatty to draw up the legal description, and we could then prepare those documents and submit those to the commissioners who are willing to sign Moccasin Drive over to the city.
Concerns? I think we need to proceed forward with that.
That's all I have for you this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Well, since, does anyone have anything for Terry before we move on?
No, but I think Chief knew he was going to miss today. He's not sick.
You think what?
Chief knew because Larry's got a name tag.
Oh, the great name tag.
I got, he did though.
Yeah, was he really sick?
Yeah, he's in the Monmouth.
I'm ready for Lieutenant Eller to report for Chief Hottishell.
First, the police department would like to announce the retirement of records supervisor Shirley Wiss. She served with the city the past 24 and a half years. Her last day was this past Friday. She started out with the city as a dispatcher. She transferred into a records clerk, and then to a records supervisor. She was an integral part of the day-to-day operations with us down there, and she's definitely going to be missed. And we just wanted to wish her well during her retirement. And we're all saddened to see her go, but on a positive note, so have much more time to spend with her grandkids and her goats.
Hopefully, we'll share at the award ceremony Saturday night.
Hopefully.
Okay.
Which brings me to the second part. With the departure of Shirley Wiss, we've got an opening now. We'd like to recommend the promotion of Candace Porter to the position of Police Administrative Assistant. When Shirley decided that she was going to retire, she started grooming Candace, teaching her everything that she knew. Candace soaked it up like a sponge, spent every opportunity that she could, sitting in Shirley's office with her, learning, you know, all the day-to-day stuff that Shirley had been doing. Candace is going to take over. She's very capable. So far, she's done an outstanding job in filling the shoes left by Shirley. For this, we'd recommend a salary of $14.50 an hour, which is an increase from her current rate of $13.21. It's a dollar 29.
How long has Candace been with us?
She was hired in November of 2008.
2008.
And she does, I deal with her on a very regular basis through my work, and she does do an outstanding job. Is that $14.50 an hour rate, Terry, is that consistent with a position, a promotion to that position?
I think so. What we looked at, when Greg and I looked at this, was kind of where other staff in that realm would be, and it is consistent with that. I would also say that if you approve putting her in that position and making that increase, that whatever additional increase that would happen in July would also be available to her.
So 14, she'd go to 14.50 now, but still be eligible for a raise in July also?
That's what I would recommend.
Enter date a motion unless there's board discussion.
I'll make the motion. To promote Candace Porter to Police Administrative Assistant at the rate of $14.50.
I'll second.
Motion by Alderman Kestrel, seconded by Alderman Hock to, for the promotion of Candace Porter to the Police Administrative Assistant at the rate of $14.50 an hour. Roll call, please.
Alderman Flake?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderman Kestrel?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Motion carried five zero with one absent.
I have one more thing for Larry. My understanding is during the snow, snowmageddon, that there My understanding is during the snow, snowmageddon, that there were some officers who worked, there was a fear that they would not be able to get home and then back for their next shift or back for court, and they actually slept in the squad room or on the floor. And I guess my comment would be not only to the police department, but to any other personnel, if we can't start making some kind of provisions, it's to our benefit to make sure that these people, whether we have a room on standby at a motel that we can put them up, that's, we treat our employees better than to make them, or allow them to sleep on the floor.
I was not aware that there were employees sleeping on the floor.
So whether it's rental crew that's unable to get home, I think that those kinds of provisions to...
I had the same conversation with Guy and Darren Dickman, and I told him, you know, they've worked like a 40-hour shift, and I said, and neither one of them knew whether they could get home or not. So Guy was gonna sleep downstairs, and I said, "Go get a hotel room or motel room. Just do it, and get some rest and get a shower," and I would tell the police department the same thing.
And whether that means a policy, a, some type of operating procedure, because the other thing that I think would go along with that is, at the point that that is, we're allowing them to stay at a motel, no different than if they were out of town training, they would be able to get reimbursed for their meals, that kind of thing, so...
It's probably a good idea to have a written policy, so that everyone's aware of it and knows what to do in those instances. So we'll put something together and put it in writing for your approval.
Thank you, and thank your officers who slept on the floor.
Anything else, Ms. Miller? All right, thank you. We're gonna move on. Recreation Department, Dottie Phillips.
Dottie's meeting time.
Good evening. The first item is the Recreation Monthly Report, and just have two notes for this. The first one is the basketball league registration deadline has been extended to January 17th to make sure that people have time to get in with all the weather situations and kids not being in school, what have you. The second thing is the Rec Connect, the brochure. Each of you should have a copy of that up there. We left them laying. Yes, that's it. That should be mailed out to the homes sometime this week. Those are the only two notes I have on the monthly report.
You're a poor mailman. I'm glad you didn't do this for Monday.
Someone did a good job putting this together. Is that your department that did it all?
Yes, sir.
Very impressive.
Good. You said these are gonna be mailed?
I'm sorry?
Are these being mailed out?
Yes, they will be mailed to every resident within the city limits.
Very nice.
Any questions for Dottie on her monthly report? About the soccer program?
In your packet, you have the survey results that were compiled from the surveys that were returned to us. Fairly, I guess we're happy with the evaluations that were received. Again, as with baseball, softball, I think there's always areas that we can improve and things that we recognize that we need to do a better job at. So in your results there, I have included observations and recommendations for each of those areas.
So first, we had too many on the soccer rosters, and then we didn't have enough, so we found a happy median where we think they should be.
I hope that we can accomplish that next season.
You know, by trial and error, find out what works.
Dottie, did we ever hear back from the Life Touch photographer regarding his commitment?
We did. He has actually, we have received the checks.
Thank you.
For that commission.
And I think next year, when we're talking about bids for all that services, you might want to kindly remind us of the survey.
Yes.
Kindly.
That's all I have with that, unless you all have any other questions.
Any questions for Dottie? How about the discussion with Curves?
Yes. From one of the previous meetings, there was an individual who came here asking us to look into the Curves situation, and whether it was something that we could somehow take over the operations of that or get the equipment donated to us or what have you. I've had a conversation with the owner of Curves, I think the day following that meeting, and told her that we would possibly be interested in that equipment. I spoke to her again today, and just to follow up, because I hadn't heard from her, and she indicated that she has made a decision what she will be doing with that business and with those pieces of equipment, that it would not be being donated to the city. Other than that, she did not go into detail, so...
We tried.
Well, if that's something, though, that, I mean, we spent a lot of money on youth soccer and youth softball, but I, you know, we talked about, in one of our explaining about developing a community that has more appeal for retirement. And you see in the recreation side, there's dances and different things being offered, but I think we should take a look and see what we could do in terms of a program for people over 55-plus in terms of recreation or exercise and that kind of thing. I think that's part of the segment that we really need to look at, because we tend to focus on the youth, and that's great, but that's a significant group of people in that area.
My understanding, Dottie, aren't you already working in conjunction with the senior citizen? Haven't you been in contact with them?
We have made contact with them, and we are trying to get some programs started. We were able to do the dances, because there is a facility locally with the bank where we can use to do that sort of thing. As far as any sort of fitness program or whatever, we don't have any facilities to offer something like that. So until we identify a location where we can do that, it's, I don't really have any answers for it until we can get a location to do it.
Well, I think, I'd like to see if we could do a priority in that, because that certainly is a need in our community. Because sometimes you go with the government stuff, and you say, well, is there a private sector addressing the issue? And if there is, you stay out of it. But in this case, with Curves closing, there is no private sector that's specifically geared toward that population. So I think we need to really put a strong effort to see if we can come up with something, in my opinion.
Okay, we'll look into it.
Any other questions for Dottie?
Put it up in Brad's building.
Probably not. Thank you, Dottie. All right, Michelle Schluthar, Economic Developer, what do you got for us, Michelle?
Good evening. The first item I have for you is my Economic Development Monthly Report.
So did, was the meeting held between Montgomery and Warren County Economic, or is that still coming up?
Tomorrow. Tomorrow. Twelve o'clock. It looks like you've had some interest of people looking at least, looking at our community, and hopefully something develops off of that.
If there's no other thing, the only thing I'd like to let you know is that we submitted our application for Tourist City USA for 2013. We have received that, I believe, three years in a row, so we are submitting, we submitted our application for '13 to see if we'd get it for our fourth year.
Any other questions for Michelle? Thank you.
Thank you.
You're good. Gabrielle Carey?
I hope we got six months' worth of questions for her.
She what?
Lots of questions.
Finance manager.
Good evening.
Finance manager, there you go.
The first item I have is the accounts payable. The total amount is $218,893.65 that I am requesting approval for.
Where did mine go? I lost it. What was it, $218,893?
Yes, and 65 cents.
I make a motion to pay the bills of $218,893.65.
Second. Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Flank to pay the bills in the amount of $218,893.65. Any questions or discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Cornell?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Clark?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
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 Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent.
Okay, and then the next item is just the monthly report. If you all had any questions about that.
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
The next item I had was the monthly report.
Mm-hmm.
So unless you all had questions about that, that's all I have.
Any questions on the monthly report?
I hope it's six months' worth of questions.
I think you're good.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Gabrielle. With that being said, the next thing I have is some bills to convert to ordinances. First bill is number 01-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 01-14.
Wow.
Second. Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Hock for first reading of bill number 01-14.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Warrenton, Missouri for signage installed and maintained by commission to display an accomplishment plaque.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 01-14.
Second. Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Clark for second and final reading and passage of bill number 01-14.
In ordinance authorizing execution of an agreement between Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission and the City of Warrenton, Missouri for signage installed and maintained by commission to display an accomplishment plaque.
Roll call, please.
Probably want to state to the public that this is the plaque that will go on two locations on the interstate that acknowledged the Fair Queen, Missouri, not the Missouri State.
Is that what it is?
Yeah. Missouri State Fair Queen, acknowledge her accomplishment on, I guess, on both the honor.
Yes.
Okay, good point. Roll call, please.
Alderperson Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes. Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Item 15B, bill number 02-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 02-14.
Second. Motion by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Hock for first reading of bill number 02-14.
In ordinance amending section 405.050, definitions and interpretations of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 02-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Kessley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 02-14.
In ordinance amending section 405.050, definitions and interpretation of the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri.
Roll call, please.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Items 15C, bill number 03-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 03-14.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Hock for first reading of bill number 03-14.
In zoning ordinance as authorized under section 405.390, the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri approving a site plan for Cadillac Bar and Grill located at 108 East Boozle.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 03-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Kessley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 03-14.
In zoning ordinance as authorized under section 405.390, the municipal code of the City of Warrenton, Missouri approving a site plan for Cadillac Bar and Grill located at 108 East Boozle.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderperson Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Motion carried five to zero with one absent. Item number 15D, bill number 04-14.
Call for the first reading of bill number 04-14.
Second. Motion made by Alderman Clark, seconded by Alderman Hock for first reading of bill number 04-14.
In ordinance approving the conditional use to allow a bar and grill for Cadillac Bar and Grill located at 108 East Boozle.
Call for second final reading and passage of bill number 04-14.
Second.
Motion by Alderman Flank, seconded by Alderman Kessley for second and final reading and passage of bill number 04-14.
In ordinance approving the conditional use to allow a bar and grill for Cadillac Bar and Grill located at 108 East Boozle.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Alderman Cornell?
No.
Alderperson Kessler?
Yes.
Alderman Hock?
Yes.
Alderman Flank?
Yes.
Motion carried five to one with one absent. Alderman Cornell, you want to comment on your no vote?
I have some concerns that were raised at the planning and zoning meeting during the conditional use portion, and that was a four to three vote. I feel that those three had some serious concerns, and I'd share those concerns.
Very good. This time, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move?
Second.
Motion by Alderman Kessley, seconded by, was that Alderman Hock?
Yes.
For adjournment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.